Good evening. The Rowan Township Planning Board is now in session. Call to order. The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied by the placing of a notice of this meeting on the bulletin board at the municipal building, filing the notice with the township clerk, and transmitting the notice to the Huntington County Democrat, The Courier-News, The Star-Ledger, and The Trenton Times. Hold call, please.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Geddings.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Here.
Mr. Robin Fatu.
Here.
Mr. Scott McDade. Ms. Michelle Capakiri.
Here.
Mr. Dennis Concanon has asked to be excused. Mr. James Miller also asked to be excused. Mr. Glenn Sokolowski.
Here.
Board professionals, Board Attorney, Mr. Joe Torriello.
Present.
Township Planner, Mr. Jeffrey Baccarella.
Here.
Township Engineer, Ms. Rakesh Darji.
Present.
Board Traffic Consultant, Mr. Jay Troutman.
Here.
And all other board professionals about to be excused.
Okay, very good, thank you. I'm going to ask everybody to please join, rise and join in the reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for our troops.
Pledge of Allegiance in reply to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If everybody has a copy of the agenda for this evening, I'm just going to make a note up front that we had, the Planning Board will be going into a closed session this evening. But in consideration of how many people are here and what we have on the agenda, we're going to put that at the end of the meeting. We just have to make sure that we allot time to go into closed session. So if you're following, I didn't forget about it. I just moved it to the end in the interest of all of your time this evening. And thank you all for being here. We have quite a bit on the agenda this evening. In terms of, excuse me, Chairman's report, I do not have anything to report on this evening. Anybody on the board have anything to report on? Yeah, engineers.
I don't have any.
You're good. Planners' comments?
No comment.
Very good. Attorneys' comments?
Nothing to add.
Okay.
Chairman, if you don't mind, I guess I can get a quick update on the Department of Planning. The county did reach a resolution and filed a brief to 285 minutes for the floor.
Very good, thank you. Move forward. Okay. All right, next up are the minutes for February 12th, 2025. We had received those in advance of the meeting for review. Does anyone have any comments or changes to the February 12th minutes? I do not. There being none, can I have a motion to approve the February 12th, 2025 minutes?
Chairman, Mr. Edward Geddings.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Yes.
Ms. Robin Fatu.
Yes.
Mr. Scott McDade. Mr. Glenn Sokolowski.
Yeah.
Okay. Next up are the meeting minutes for the February 26th, 2025 meeting, along with the closed session notes. So does anybody have any comments or suggested changes to those? Okay. There being none, can I have a motion to approve?
Still move.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Geddings.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Yes.
Mr. Scott McDade. Mr. Glenn Sokolowski.
Yes.
All right. We have some resolutions to approve this evening as well. The first up is from 2024, actually. It's Resolution Number 14-2024. This is Flemington Junction 3 LLC. We have all received the resolution in advance for review. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Ron Schamanowicz here on behalf of Flemington Junction Associates 3. The applicant, we're here tonight to discuss the resolution. Your counsel, Mr. Torriello, was courteous enough to give me an advanced copy of it. We reviewed that, provided him with several comments. But there is one item in particular we wanted to discuss. There is a proposed condition of approval. It's set forth in Propose Section C, Paragraph 14. And that condition states that the applicant shall apply and obtain a zoning permit and all construction permits within two years of the date of the resolution. And if that doesn't happen, the approval automatically expires, becomes null and void. That's the first part of Condition 14. The second part of Condition 14 says that the applicant has one year from the first construction permit to commence construction and obtain a permanent CO. And if not, the approval expires and becomes null and void. This condition is unworkable for my client, and you'll hear from him as to why. But I do want to point out a couple of things to the board. We don't dispute that boards where there's a variance grant that has the power to put time limitations on variances. So we agree on the law. The question is whether this board has been authorized by their rules. There's no ordinance in place. And I will also emphasize it was not discussed during the hearing what a reasonable time limitation should be. But perhaps most importantly, as I hope many of the board members recall, this same applicant or an associated entity known as Flemington Junction, Roman numeral 1, came before this board, sought approval, was granted preliminary and final site plan approval, eight variances, three design waivers. And that condition was not included, the condition we complain of tonight, was not included in that resolution. And that was as a result of our appearance on Flemington Junction 1. And Mr. Gardner, who you'll hear from in a minute, gave reasons why it's an unworkable condition. So Flem 1 does not have that condition. We came to you with a second application, which we refer to as Flem 2. Similar situation. We were received preliminary and final major site plan approval. That approval included five variances and one design exception. And that resolution did not include the condition. We now come to the resolution for tonight, and the condition is proposed to be included. It's our request that it be excluded from the resolution. A couple of additional points for the board to consider. Again, the board certainly has the authority to impose durational limitations where there is a variance involved. We don't dispute that, but they must be reasonable. My humble opinion is that it should, the standards for that should be set forth in an ordinance. You have no such ordinance. You do have rules and regulations. Mr. Baccarella pointed that out to me. And those rules and regulations do allow the board to consider alternate time periods depending upon the application. I would say that the board should apply their rules consistently. So if you did a certain way in Flem 1 and Flem 2 for certain reasons, this is a similar application, and the condition should be omitted for the same reasons. The the other thing I want to point out is that the time limitation in your rule, your Planning Board's rules and regulation applies across the board. So if you have someone coming into this board for a site plan with a one-foot side yard variance, that time limitation applies. If you have someone coming in for a much larger project that might take longer to get fully approved, get through financing, maybe the time period shouldn't apply uniformly to all different types of projects. And the board needs to look at this issue project by project. The other thing I would just point out to the board is, what's the risk here? You have two projects being built. The third one, we're trying to get off the ground. You know this developer, the variances the board did grant that would be subject to this time limitation are dimensional. Some have to do with the setback to the flood zone and having improvements in the flood zone. Some have to do with the size and shape of the property, which is not going to change. So, you know, I would ask the board to take that into account. Those are what I would say, you know, the lawyer arguments for why this condition should be excised from the resolution. But there's practical considerations. And I would turn to Mr. Gardner, who lives this every day, has to go out and get financing and actually take risks to build these projects in your town. So David, if you could just comment on how that proposed condition in the resolution affects you.
Well, first, I think you've done such a good job that I don't even need to hear from you.
The charge is always, it's the that was the same.
Sir, I'm going to need you guys to be right into that microphone.
I'm sorry. It's the same things that we spoke about on the first project. And the second one, you didn't even put it in there. So we thought everybody was, you know, understood. But we have to get financing on it. I know banks are going to give us a loan on the property and on the project if the approval can go away. You know, number, the first project, when we built the four buildings, 150,000 feet, we still don't have permanent COs, okay? And Jeff just told me this, and it's, I think the way the ordinance, not the ordinance, the way your rule is written, it's two years from when the resolution is signed. We're at four years from the resolution signed on the four buildings right now. We still don't have permanent COs. We have TCOs on all the buildings. And apparently, we finally solved something that Jeff came up with. I don't know, there was, there's been a number of things over and over. Lots of things have popped up to get to the permanent CO spot. But that's, it's four years. So it's an end. We leased the whole place up right away. We had, we got tenants on the, like, it wasn't, we pulled all the permits on the four buildings. We, it just, you know, it takes a long time. And we, you know, we had, at that time, we had crazy supply chain issues with things that were like the leftovers from COVID. It's just not, it's that, and also, we're not even, we don't even own the land yet on this one. We're, we're, you know, contract purchasers. So, you know, to go and close, and you guys can pull the approval? I mean, after we spent $1 million literally to get to the point? Because that's how much it literally cost by the time we're done with everybody and the whole thing and the engineering and okay, and they get to the finish line, and then you guys can just pull the plug? It's like, so like, do I go forward and close with that? I mean, it's just, it's just, it's very unreasonable. I mean, our expectations, because one and two, one, we came in and I probably was better talking about the issues than I am now. Two, it wasn't in there. So we figured that, you know, you were just, I don't, I don't know if it was the same, if Joe's office drew it. It must have.
It was not.
Okay. So I guess, so that would have been, I guess, the reason that he didn't, he didn't bring it up again. But, you know, we, it's, it's, it's very impractical. And the other thing is, I know all the legal arguments, whatever, but we've been in business for 60 years in New Jersey. And I don't know any project ever, I think, that we've ever had that was completely variance-free. This is the only town where this has ever come up, where it was, where like, they, the, the, the Planning Board wanted to put a time limit on us because there were variances involved. There's the state rules, which I think they typically go for like five years initially, and then you can come in and extend it. But I've never had what happened here five years ago, and then what's happening now and what's in there is very, I mean, I'm not, as Ron said, I'm not arguing it's not the law and you're not, it's not the right of the board to do that. But it's one of those things that's just like over the top. And then finally, just the economics. I mean, okay, so the first project, we put the four buildings up, and we, we're 100% leased, we're 100% occupied. The second building on Miniakin, the 50,000-foot building, we have a tenant that we're doing for like 11,000 feet, and we just got assigned LOI for us, like a solar company to take the balance. So we literally going to have the whole thing fully occupied. But before that guy, the 50,000-foot guy popped into our life, I mean, the balance, which is like 37,000 feet or something, there was a 27,000-foot guy who was hot, 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 and we were going down the road. We have leases out. And then with the tariffs, the guy flipped out. Half of his stuff comes from China. And all of a sudden, he was, he went cold on us. So, you know, I mean, who knows what can happen? I mean, our business, it's a tough business, the real estate development business. Everybody thinks you just wave a wand and could spend three, four years getting things approved. We spent another couple of years building something. We spent another year or two getting it rented. And then hopefully, at the end of the day, our kids make some money on the project. Anyway, I'm just being a little silly. But I would really appreciate if the board would consider relieving us of that language because, you know, I mean, it's just, it's very onerous on us to.
Well, thank you both for that explanation. Please correct me if I'm wrong. You didn't see that language in one and two, because subsequent to those, a recommendation was made to us because we have so many applications that get approved and people disappear. So it would cause, so we put an end on it. And we started that in that interim between, I'm using your words, Flem 2 and Flem 3, okay? So that's, that's what it is. It wasn't directed solely at you. It was a procedural thing for our planning office, because there's so many applications that get approved and then.
Well, I think we've proven ourselves a little bit. At this point, we've been around for, I mean, you know, this isn't our, those two industrial buildings are not the only, we've been in town with prayer and comments for many, many years. So, I mean, we typically build what we say we're going to build, and usually it comes out pretty nice, and then we pay our taxes.
Well, well, if I, if I can, Mr. Gardner, first of all, I've dealt with both you and Mr. Schumanowicz in the past, and you're both very respectful, very professional. So this is nothing, nothing regarding any, any prior history with either of you. But this Paragraph 14 is in every resolution, in every board, everywhere in the state of New Jersey from my law firm. And it is not hyperbole or incorrect to say you are the only developer that's ever objected to this. Every developer throughout the state of New Jersey factually has no issue getting financing with this clause in Paragraph 14, because it is so standard that it is literally, it permeates the land use boards throughout the state of New Jersey, factually. And to the extent that you need a, an extension from the two years, you just come before the board and say, I'm having a problem with, and I need an extra year. And it's routinely granted. And as your attorney said, with respect to the MLUL, you would be allowed to get these three one-year extensions to go out to five years. And at the end of five years, then you're out of luck, not because of the board, but because that's what land use law says. So this Paragraph 14 that you're objecting to is literally the status quo of applications throughout the state of New Jersey. So I understand that, that you, you, you're feeling discomfort from it because it wasn't in the prior ones. But I do things differently, and, and my firm does things differently. And we do it in a way to ensure that nothing slips through the cracks. And the onus would be on you to come back before the board to ask for additional time. We would hear you, we're reasonable, you know, this is a reasonable board, and I certainly can't speak for them. But to the extent that you were to put forth a reason for an extension, it would, it would be, it would be granted. And then you can continue to do it. The downside is if we follow your request to remove it, we have, we have a, we have a resolution that goes in perpetuity, and I have to, and of course, this board is free to reject my legal advice. They wouldn't be the first client that would reject my legal advice. It won't be the last. But I can only say with the utmost passion that I would encourage the board to keep the resolution as is, that any concerns that you have is addressed through a procedural. You write a letter to the board saying, I need an extra year. And you can do that three times. So I don't, I don't understand what the issue is, knowing that there's that ability to, to, to get that, that additional time period. And, and, you know, Mr. Schumanowicz did talk about consistency, and he referenced one and two in terms of consistency. That consistency is also why I'm, because every resolution that will come from my firm is going to have Paragraph 14 in it on every application. So to your point about consistency, this is an SOP as far as, as far as I believe, unless the board directs me to, to, to not put a time limit on it, I will certainly follow their advice. But unless I'm directed to remove 14, this is going to appear over and over again in every application.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond? Certainly. Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, I like that Joe has been elevated to the desk. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. That's right.
Mr. Torriello mentioned that this condition permeates. From his perspective, it permeates because he's a board attorney, and he does this on his boards. I go to boards throughout the state. Sometimes I see this, sometimes I do not. So we have a difference of opinion. I think a difference of experience. Anytime a board's represented by the, the Drill Torriello group, yes, you're going to see that condition. It does not mean it's in every single town. I can represent that to you. I go to a lot of different towns throughout the state. The comment that the municipal land use law allows three years plus extensions, we were granted preliminary and final site plan approval. Where you get final with preliminary, the protective vesting is based upon the final. So that is a two-year protective vesting. That's for the site plan approval. It doesn't say anything about the variance. The variance is controlled by the provision that you're trying to put into the resolution by way of your rules and regulations for your board. So there isn't a statutory provision to come in and ask for that extension. And in terms of Flem 1, remember, there, the condition was discussed, to the chair's point that this came later in reaction to certain applicants who kind of disappeared. That condition was placed in by Mr. Drill, and it was argued as we are tonight. And the board made a decision to actually take it out. It wasn't that it wasn't part of your procedure. It was that it was placed in, arguments were made, and the board made a decision to take it out. So that was an affirmative decision. And in terms of perpetuity, it's, it's not an approval in perpetuity. I disagree respectively with Joe, again, for the same reason. The municipal land use law only grants you protection for a certain amount of time on the site plan. So we have both the site plan approval and the variance approval. So it's not in perpetuity. Those are my responses.
Can I ask a point of clarification? Was Flem 1 before the Board of Adjustment?
No.
Because Mr. Drill wasn't our attorney for Planning Board back then.
He was the
Mr. Bellardo, I believe, had to step down, and Mr. Drill jumped in. Yeah, I re-read all three resolutions, Flem 1, Flem 2, and Flem 3, word for word.
Okay.
And the attorneys are referenced.
Yeah. So I'll just share as a kind of companion note, because I do wear two hats on Board of Adjustment and Planning Board. And this is in every resolution that we see at Board of Adjustment. So, and we routinely, once or twice a year, we'll see applicants coming back before the board to ask for the additional time. And it's literally a three-minute, you know, they stand up and say why they need it, what, what the justification is. I've never seen one denied, but it also gives us that authority to have these time frames, you know, upon which we expect things to happen, because we haven't passed in our township, had some projects that came in, pulled some permits, and then disappeared that didn't have this condition a long time ago.
There's something, if I may, something that Mr. Gardner said, I just want to get some clarification on. That's your ability to get the financing for this with the ability to get the extensions. Because I understand why a bank wouldn't give you the loan if, if the Planning Board could pull the application. But with the extensions that are available, notwithstanding your point just a minute ago, doesn't that open the door for the banks, so long as they know that they can get extensions? Could I give a quick answer to that? First of all, the, the language is scary in the, in the resolution, which follows the rule in reg. It's an automatic expiration and, and approval becoming null and void. So from the lawyer point of view, and lawyers represent banks, they see that and say, whoa, this isn't even like, this is like, you get to that date, there's no more approval. But I don't, David, do you have something?
No, I want to go back to what Joe just said, okay? We've done business for 60 years in New Jersey. We've been in probably 20, 25 municipalities, okay? And I, 93% of our, whatever we were doing had some sort of variance, and I've never seen this anywhere other than this town. It's such a red flag that you would bring it up. So it's just their firm that, you know, when it makes work, I get it. So that we're here talking, and they had to talk to us and look in the books and do whatever you got to do.
Mr. Gardner, it's not done to make work. I don't appreciate that. It's not.
When I say, I'm not, Joe, I'm just saying that, like, we're not the first ones to say it. Apparently, if it's
We are thorough in what we do. It has nothing to do with making work. And my job is to protect my client, which is this board. And factually, factually, there hasn't literally never been an issue with financing in all of the towns that my firm is involved with, none of them. And they've been projects as big as this or bigger, and some smaller. So I know, because nobody's ever raised this as an issue. No one's even objected.
Have you ever represented a developer with a bank to get a loan?
We're not going to litigate this here this evening. This is for the Planning Board to hear your concerns and to make a decision. I can speak as a township committee person that we, as a committee, have had concerns with projects that have approved applications for which there is no expiry. So we wanted to make sure that we had some level of protection, and we now know that there is. So we know that there is an ability to have extension. We are a very reasonable planning board, and we always have that option.
We're proposing more suggestion.
Yeah, if the board's not comfortable with removing the condition altogether, and I will say that in dealing with the issue, Mr. Torriello offline, the last draft has increased the time period from one year to two year. Your, your rules of reg talk about one year. Would the board consider extending that period beyond the two years that Mr. Torriello put in? We would recommend the four-year period.
I mean, would the resolution be more amenable if it said the two years with the option of additional to sites, specifically that you can come in for additional extension at one-year increments for up to five years? Because that's their way to soften the language.
They're up.
Yeah, I mean, that would help. But having, having a set period greater than two years would, would help a lot more.
Would that be for permits or were you talking about permits yet?
Actually, for both. Let me just double check, because that, that condition has two parts to it, as I stated in my introduction. I think the, the most important part is applying for the permit and obtaining the construction permit. That was the two-year limitation. I think that's the most important part of getting a little more room.
Because where was the permanency? Again, what I first said is that Jeff, we still don't have the permanent CO on Flem 1, okay? And I think we're close now, finally, right? You, you, you came up with Yes, that's, that's correct. Every, every permanent and TCO and permanent, you know, there's made of procedures, and nothing's, everything is done in accordance with the site plan and what the board approved. And, but, and there's a checklist that's, that's required for permanence.
Right, right now, the draft, as, you know, the last draft has a two-year period for construction permits from the date of the resolution and a one-year period from the first construction permit to commence and complete construction with
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's very unreasonable. How, how don't we know that, that construction-wise, that there's not going to be another pandemic? That there's not going to be this, there's not, there's, there's things that happen, okay? And then there's also the market. If we're, if we're not, and then the question also was, is CO for the shell of the building? And then we have tenants that go in. So we, it should be specific about the shell. So, I mean, if you need to put a time limit on it, because you think we're going to go someplace and not, then, then I'm asking for, I think, four years, I mean, again, we've been at it for four years since the signed resolution on 1. We've been done for a year, but there was paperwork and things. No, there was, there was site work that needed to be completed and some inspection work. So there was, there was things that needed to be inspected. There was paperwork that became like new paperwork for your processes over here that had been pushed back. And we had to go back to the MUA to get another, like, letter. We had to go to soil to get another letter, letters that had already really happened already. So that's just part of the
Sir, if I may, I have been in both the construction department and the zoning department, and the process with everything has not been straightforward, okay? So I understand all of your concerns, but the process with everything, with new tenants coming in, it was not the easiest process.
Because of us?
Well, between the communication between the township and your offices, yes. So
Hopefully, you can consider some sort of compromise that we can all
What, what I would, what I would be okay with adding would be, if said during two-year period or extension thereof, which shall not be unreasonably withheld. which shall not be unreasonably withheld. Cause it won't. Now you've got something, you've got verbiage in there that says not only he, can you get the extensions, but it will not be unreasonably withheld.
After how many years?
It's, it's the, it's the law, it's five years. You can't go beyond five years. So you've got.
Nobody here is asking, no one's asking for beyond five years.
How about this, two-year or extension thereof, thereof, which shall not be unreasonably withheld, consistent with the MLUL. Which is, which is three, one-year extension.
We're starting to mix apples and oranges with the preliminary and final site plan.
Look, I'm, I'm, I'm trying, I'm not comfortable with anything other than that. That's it. That's like all I can offer. From my perspective.
Well, I mean, we're, we have a simple request to the board. The simple request is the last draft has a two-year period and a one-year period. We would request that those periods be bumped down. How far out, Mr. Gardner's asking for years, how far out would be in the wisdom of the board? But I think it should be a, a time certain. We, we understand we can come in for extensions. We, we get it. We'll, we'll leave it to the boards.
How about if we split the difference here on three?
So it means three years from when? When you sign this resolution, what do we have to accomplish?
Have to obtain a zoning permit and construction permits.
Yeah. Is it a construction?
Do we have to do site improvements to, to apply for that, Jeff?
Meaning?
If we came in, if this was all, if we did this and we came in in a month for a zoning permit and a building permit before we touched the ground, are you going to issue a building permit?
No, it's not an issue.
I know, you're not.
But Jeff doesn't issue buildings.
I mean, the town, I mean, the building department. Would you issue a zoning permit?
Not without a pre-construction meeting or without the cations review and.
Yeah, yeah, no, the resolution compliance, the plans are all finalized. See, that, that, for the board, just so you understand the process, what happens? We become at the mercy of this gentleman, your engineer, okay? And if he drags it on for months and months and months of reviews and back and forth and blah, 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 then all of a sudden, that, that two, that period of time that we're talking about, we, we start to lose time to get permits and to build the building. That, that's why, I mean, I, I appreciate that, you know, that's what happens. So.
So the problem, once it's done with resolution compliance and, and the board signs off, the engineer signs off, the pre-construction meeting.
Correct.
Submitted permits bond and then a zoning permit, just a clearance that you had that be nothing that we're going to put anything extra. This is just to protect the board, the process and everything's all, all.
But for the board's education, what happens is soil conservation will probably not let them issue a building permit until we do a certain amount of the site improvements, build the detention basin, put up silt fence, do this. There's a whole bunch of stuff that happens. I'm not making this up. This is reality of how it works. So all of a sudden, three years is, that's why we're four years out right now on the, on the first.
Chairman, if I could make a recommendation, because we could obviously go quite extensively on this. We need to create standard language that we put in all our resolutions because we will be then negotiating every single situation. So we need to agree as a board, what will that standard language be? That is consistent with the laws, that also creates the flexibility to help support our partners in development in this process. But what I would like to avoid is creating one-off situations to accommodate individuals versus having a standard language that we can all rely upon, that everybody knows is consistent, that the community understands is consistent.
So should we table this for tonight and come up with something to substitute here?
Whatever it is, I'm just recommending it's the same.
The same across the years.
That's my recommendation.
And to be clear, from the applicant's point of view, we would have no problem with the chairman's suggestion of a three-year time.
With the ability to come in and ask for the, to sort of the extension.
Of course, of course.
I think that was a fair compromise by the chairman.
The added language council was just clarifying what's meant there, right? It just expands upon it, doesn't change anything, but it clarifies and provides additional depth to what that means.
I would suggest that.
Okay, and you're amenable to that, correct?
For three years.
Can you reread the language council, just so we're clear on what we would amend?
Well, I, are you saying three years?
It says two years.
It says two years right now, so you want three on every, on everybody?
Three with that additional language.
Are we okay with three? It would have to be in every single resolution. That's what I'm saying. It would apply to everything moving forward.
Just, just to be clear.
You're looking for the second.
Well, it's the second part, because we're going to create a visual.
Yes, it's the second part.
It's, it's both of them.
I'm going to recommend we table it, we discuss it, and whatever we come up with as the, as the consistent language for everybody, that's what it'll appear in there, whatever it is. And then you'll get a copy.
You're putting us into duress, just so you know. If we can't move this forward with the, with the, okay? Because we have, so we have a contract. I've got to close on the land in, in like 90 days.
Mr. Gardner, I hear you. If you want to get out, you can accept the resolution with the language I have it. You don't want to do that. So the time, the additional time is your voluntary choice. I'm not comfortable making a decision tonight, so I'm asking the board to table it.
Are we saying three years?
I'm not okay with that. I'm not okay with changing a single comma or semicolon at this point. You're asking the board to consider it. They're going to consider it. We need additional time.
Can we, can we accept it the way you drew it now and come back in and reopen it as a, a conversation on this thing? And come back?
I, I, I wouldn't want to go down that road.
The reason, the reason is, is like, we can't, we can't finish off certain permits to build here without getting, having a signed resolution.
We'll turn it around.
Okay, so there's permits that are involved with the DEP with, that I, I can't go forward because I need a signed resolution. I mean, I've never had experience like this that it keeps going on and on.
We can accept as it's written now and you don't have to worry about it. So any additional time or duress is self-imposed because you're the one who is interposing an objection to the verbiage I provided. So I don't understand, I understand that, but it's like, you can't have it both ways.
When is your next meeting?
Excuse us, can we talk about this in executive this evening?
And we will turn this around quickly for you. We understand your time constraints, so, but we really do need to take this away.
We are tonight, we will discuss it in closed session.
So when is the next meeting that we can come back and do this again? That's what I'm.
You can wait till we're done.
I'm sorry?
You can wait till we're done with closed session.
But our next meeting is April 23rd.
So it's two weeks.
It's two weeks. It's two weeks. I'd rather come back. I have a gig tomorrow night. My band is playing in New York City. I'm exhausted.
Well, I think we're done then, thank you.
I know. April 23rd?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, well, we'll come back on April 23rd. Appreciate if you can talk about it at your closed session.
If you're working through, and then I'll be in touch with Mr. Torriello.
I just, I just would request that you consider the, if you reverse it, but in our shoes, that we did two projects. We didn't have this issue. Why it's, I really was expecting to walk in here and be added five minutes. I don't know why this is a thing, but apparently it is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schramm.
Thank you.
Okay, next up. Resolution oh six dash two oh two five, New Jersey Conservation Foundation. We have that resolution. Anybody have any comments?
This is New Jersey Conservation?
Yes, it is.
I just want to make a note of an, a edit that Jeffrey had added. And it's, I believe it's the last page if Jeff or Joe want to just put it on the record that it's there.
Yeah, I'm just looking for, here we go. It's. Yeah, the D, so it's on page 11. Number three D, uh, the four trailers on the western side of the property shall be removed. That was discussed and agreed to, and it was an oversight on my part, so. Good eyes on that, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? No, can I have a motion to approve resolutions zero six dash two oh two five?
I'm going to give that to Scott. Sorry, Michelle. Chairman, Ms. Edward Giddings?
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Ms. Donna Drews?
Yes.
Ms. Robin Fatu?
Yeah.
Mr. Scott McDade?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle Kavakiri?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn Sokolowski?
Yes.
Okay, that was clear. Next up is resolution zero seven dash two zero two five, which is Joseph and Despina McNulty. This is the properties at Six Rolling Lane and Three William Barnes Road. Anybody have any comments or changes on this? I had recused myself, just for the record, I needed to recuse myself from this, so I have nothing to say.
I'll move it if no, no discussion. Show us how you make second it, okay? Vice Chairman, Ms. Donna Drews?
Yes.
Ms. Robin Fatu?
Yes.
Mr. Scott McDade?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle Kavakiri?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn Sokolowski?
Yes.
Okay. And the last resolution up this evening is resolution zero eight dash two zero two five. This is Woodmont Raritan Flex LLC at 101 Warhees Corner Road. Any comments? Regarding this resolution? I'd like to move to approve it.
Okay. Okay. Chairman, Ms. Edward Giddings?
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Ms. Donna Drews?
Yes.
Ms. Robin Fatu? Mr. Scott McDade?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn Sokolowski?
Yes.
Okay. Next up is citizens' privilege. For the folks who are here in the room this evening, if you have anything you'd like to address to the planning board other than what's the two applications that are yet to come, this would be your opportunity to do so. And if you'd like to, please step up to the microphone, give your name, and we would be happy to hear from you. There's nobody online, we don't do that anymore, so. Okay, there being none, we can move on to the first public hearing, which is Flemington Concrete Products LLC. This is a minor site plan with bulk variance for one-story, 10,800 square foot manufacturing building.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to spin to the hall. Michelle, if you want, you can go in the conference room and say it's more comfy.
Don't forget, she.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you for your protection.
Yes.
All right, good evening. My name is Robert McNally. I'm from the law firm of McNally, Yaros, Consignia and Lime. We represent Creter Concrete Products LLC. Uh, this property is located at five Foster Lane, block 27, lot 30.02. The property owner is Flemington Concrete Products LLC. This is an approximately 19.6 acre parcel in your I2 or major industrial district zone. The parcel was created as part of a minor subdivision of three industrial lots in 2009 via resolution one to 2009. Also in 2009, the property was approved for development as a two-family, 6,400 square foot office and garage building, a 3,100 square foot concrete recycling plant, and a one-story, 24,000 square foot manufacturing building. These improvements were subsequently constructed along with other approved site improvements such as paved gravel parking, three-sided storage bins, lighting, landscaping and stormwater management facilities. The applicant is currently seeking to construct an additional 10,800 square foot manufacturing building with parking and lighting on the property. The purpose of the proposed building is to provide for additional square footage that will improve the operations and the management of the existing business, but will not expand it. If this application is approved, the applicant does not intend to hire any additional employees nor expand the scope of its services. Now, I won't go into too much more detail, uh, in my opening, or leave that to our witnesses, but I do want to just outline our necessary relief tonight. We're requesting preliminary and final major site plan approval along with variances and design waivers from the following. A C variance and design waiver from section 296 dash 152 inasmuch as it references the requirement section 296 dash 75 C to C that parking be curbed, and the applicant is not proposing to do so. A C variance from section 296 dash 153 B2 for an aisle width of 18 feet or 25 feet is required, and a C variance from section 296 dash 153 B2 for an aisle width of 24 feet where 25 feet is required. No additional signage is proposed. Tonight, I have two witnesses for you. I have Richard Creter, uh, the owner of the entity holding the property, and also the entity that owns the operating company will testify to the current operations and the need for additional development. I also have Stephen Parker, Parker Engineering and Surveying, our project engineer and planner, who will testify as to the existing site, the proposed development and the legal justification for the granting of the requested variances. If anyone has any questions, I'll ask Mr. Creter to be sworn in and we'll start.
Can I swear in all of your witnesses? And I'll do the board professionals.
Absolutely.
We'll just do it once for efficiency, so everybody could raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do. Can you please start from left to right, state your name, uh, for the record?
Richard Creter.
Rakesh Darji with Vermont Resolutions.
Jeff Vacarella.
Thank you all. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Mr. Creter, will you give the board, uh, your home address, please?
Yes, 23 Providence Drive in Flemington.
And are you the owner of both the operational entity and the entity that owns the property?
Yes, that's correct.
And when did you purchase the property that we're here about tonight?
I think you mentioned that earlier, it's the same.
2009? Yes, okay. Um, and you developed, you obtained the development approvals for those current operations that I discussed in my opening, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. For the board, and this was also in, I believe, Mr. Vacarella's letter. Can you describe the current operations for the site, please?
Sure. First, I want to thank the board for the, the opportunity, the time to sit here. I know the last couple of meetings, unfortunately, were canceled abruptly, and I apologize for that. The, in addition to living within the township for the last 35 years, the, although it's listed as Flemington Concrete Products, it's actually Crater Vault is the company that worked there. It's a hundred-plus-year-old business, five generations. Uh, it's my brother and I that run the businesses now. And, uh, as I mentioned before, I lived in the township and had for a number of years.
Mr. Creter, I'm going to ask if you could just get a little bit closer to that microphone?
Sorry. No, I may have turned, is it off? No, it's okay. Uh, the, primarily the business that goes back over the 100 years is in the concrete burial vault or burial crypt business and monument work. Uh, the work that's done there primarily at the site is production of concrete burial boxes that are used for cemeteries throughout, not just the state, the larger metropolitan area, also including a lot of veteran cemeteries in the surrounding New York, New Jersey, Connecticut. Actually done in Arlington, New York, product, crypts that were sent down to Arlington National Cemetery for our veterans. And currently doing work at Arlington, at, uh, William Doyle Cemetery, which is New Jersey's own state-run veteran cemetery. So we supplied that, uh, those products throughout that area. In addition to producing concrete, in addition to, uh, the, uh, Class B recycling center. Uh, that was approved a number of years ago. So we will also bring waste concrete in, individuals bring waste concrete in, uh, that we stockpile, processing, crush and use it as a recycled aggregate that's used for construction projects throughout.
Uh, can you tell the board the number of employees that you have at your current operation?
I'm ready for that question. The number of employees are not changing.
That's right, let's frame it this way. The plan that you have for this building, you're not going to need any additional employees, correct?
No, and I'll give you a little background of what necessity, the necessity to, to, uh, have us look for, bring this building up. So in the nature of the business of what we do, when the pandemic hit early in 2021, uh, the, you can imagine that time. you can imagine that time, particularly in the northeast, New York, New Jersey, and within our veteran cemeteries, there were a number of deaths that needed to be handled. For us as a company, where most people were staying home and not working, our work exploded. We had tremendous amount of need for our product, service pandemic when it hit. And that kind of woke us up to what would be needed to be able to continue that. And also looking at for the safety for our own employees during the pandemic, making sure we had spacing and allocation for everyone to be able to work safely and continue to come to work. And those operations, although at that point, kind of pushed us to our maximum in terms of productivity, it really highlighted that some of the products that we produce need to be spread out a little more space than we currently have there. Also, one of the products that we end up producing is a columbarium, which is in-ground burial boxes are used for full casket remains to be buried. Columbarium is actually for cremains. So it's a niche wall of columbarium where the cremains are put within. Those products require a lot of additional time from a fabrication standpoint. Typically, most products in concrete are produced and then put outside of storage. This product needs a number of weeks, if not over a month, to stay inside as it's finished for production. This building allows us to have more room to keep those products inside and not have to push them out right away. So when we talk about from an employee standpoint, how that will change, it's really giving us more room to work with the existing employees that we have and be able to keep some product inside, instead of having it pushed outside right in storage.
Can you tell us the days and hours of operation of the business?
The operations typically from 6:30 to 3 o'clock, although they will start earlier and/or later depending upon the.
And one of the questions that was in Mr. Troutman's letter was describing the number of and types of delivery vehicles that would be on site, can you talk about that a little bit?
See that there. So we run a number of different trucks. The trucks could end up being dump trucks for materials that are coming in from throughout the operations. Tankers, trucks of cement, tractor trailers that run typically out. The ready-mix trucks, single, straight 33,000-pound trucks with hydraulic booms on them. The numbers are not probably around.
And one of the questions we saw in the review letter was talking about the traffic flow and circulation. Can you describe if there'll be any impact with that?
The traffic flow is pretty consistent. Certainly, when the traffic coming in, one of the requirements with our Class B permit is, is that there's permanent signs at the entrance that contractors coming in, from the air that typically comes in. Normally, the sign does give instructions of what to do, and that is a phone number there. Active 24/7 call. But the flow is a counterclockwise flow around the property. In the back where the storage is of the products, sometimes that storage, in terms of how the roads are lined up, may adjust where the type of concrete being produced, in terms of its size, may adjust where the placement is or how that's arranged, what the flow is a typical counterclockwise in work.
And just so the board is clear, this is not a retail site, correct?
There's no retail anywhere.
Okay. And with the new building, you are planning to use that for fabrication of materials or for storage? How are you use that?
Combination of both. So it's going to be fabrication of materials that are currently produced, and then the storage and finishing of those materials that are produced.
Okay. And on the plans, you have a mezzanine section, can you describe how you intend to use that?
The mezzanine is going to end up being used as a, for employees, as a break area. So the employees that will be working within this building will typically be two to three, maybe four employees from this operation that we're moving over to the building. And then those employees will have a place to wash up and.
There was a question as to the location of the stockpiles. Can you explain for the board how the DEP and county inspects these locations? And if you've had any issues in the past with that?
So the part of our permit with the DEP is an annual renewal. The DEP will come out on a quarterly basis and inspect not just the property, the piles, processing the material, but also records related to that, so what comes in and what comes out. Those piles will build up and then also go down. So those materials are always in flux daily, if not certainly weekly. Other stockpiles of materials are raw materials that are used to produce concrete, which are typically sand and stone.
And any of those materials that you're storing on site, those are materials that you've been approved to store on site, correct?
Yes.
Okay. For the process, all right. And are the existing locations of the stockpiles shown on the plans? There was some questions to whether they were located after.
Yes, at the same time, the approved for the Class B recycling, I don't believe, I don't see more.
Okay.
Is your, and it's helpful if we can see some of these things that you're describing. I don't know if your engineer is going to cover that in their testimony.
Yes, we'll cover.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Can those be added to the plan? I'm sorry, can those piles be delineated on the plan?
Sure. And not on these plans, but on prior plans, they were are the approval years ago, but also is regulated and monitored to the state.
Okay, thank you.
Any new storage on site that you'll need?
No, or minimal around the building. With production taking place within the building, this building, the building, storage is typically kept closest to the building. So maybe some rearranging. Don't proceed utilizing more space than we currently have.
Okay.
And then, I'm sorry, just will that storage be on what side of the building?
The, there's currently one building for production. Typically, everything that's stored is around that current building. The new building is adjacent to the current one, but much smaller, and it would just be filling in. So materials would be placed close to that new building, and then just as they're close to the existing building now. And the materials are concrete.
And just taking a look at some of the questions that were raised from the letters, you are able to confirm the identification number of the new building with the township fire marshal?
Yes.
Do you need a new trash enclosure?
No.
A letter from January 13, 2023, from the municipal recycling coordinator, requesting that you participate in annual reporting of the recycling activity for the prior year. Are you willing to comply with that?
Yes, and I believe we are in compliance, because I know certainly with the state, there's record keeping that's sent in and monitored continuously. In addition to the state coming out and doing inspections, we also work with the county. So although we'll have at a minimum four state inspections, in some cases, we may also have four county quarterly inspections throughout the year, in addition to when the state comes out. So we could have eight inspections come up, take place throughout.
Have you had any issues in the past with either state or county inspections?
No, there hasn't been a violation or any item of note in four or five plus years.
The township landscape architect had recommended that a condition of any approval, he added that the prior landscaping, planting, and maintenance of the vegetated stormwater management facilities that are associated with your 2009 approval be reviewed and replanted and restored. You have no issue with that, do you?
No, that's, that's fine.
Okay. The fire marshal had, also in his letter of January 3rd, I think there were four or five issues that he wanted you to address, assuming you don't have any issue with that?
No.
Can you briefly talk about the color of the new building and its relation to the existing building?
To the extent possible, we're going to match the buildings. The buildings are light tan, and the gutters are blue. The company's color is blue, so we'll keep it as a close match. I'm not sure who's going to really see it, but at least it'll be consistent.
And can you touch on that, what somebody driving by can see from the road?
The site, the site would have access from Pennsylvania Avenue. And between Pennsylvania Avenue and our site or other properties, one of them being the Tunis or the Stavola asphalt plant. So we're in between them and at a different elevation. So very little of any, this building, I don't think that we will see it from any road.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything else for this witness.
Any other questions from the board members? Mr. Creeder?
Yeah, a question. I don't know if you were going to go over it. There was an earlier report from the RTMUA regarding sewer capacity.
Yes.
Or if that's fed a left for the engineer. It's got to be answered either way. Yeah, Mr. Creeder, move on to that.
Yeah, so the, currently, the we have a capacity, we're underutilized by .50 of an EDU. And the employee count is not changing. And that was as of a recent survey that was done for the 2025 year. And the year prior, we were under by over twice that. I think where this came up, I know this has been out there in the for consideration for a few years, we're finally sitting down today. I think that one point, we were over by one quarter of an EDU three, four years ago. That was the time when we had the pandemic hit and our numbers spiked. But we've been nowhere near that employee count since then.
So do you have an updated letter from RTMUA stating that you have capacity?
We do, as a matter of fact. So we have a letter from December 15th of 2023 that states that the difference between the EDUs allotted to the property and the 2024 calculated usage is two. And then a letter from December 12th of 2024, where that difference is .50. So both incidences.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Do you want to copy this now, or do you want to copy this letter? Give it to you.
I have a bunch of.
We have those back to 2022.
Yeah, we just have an old. And other point of clarification, if you can find the employee count, that would be helpful, because that relates to traffic and sewer capacity and all that kind of stuff. So if you can find it in your notes at some point, I think that would be helpful, because.
I think we have 32.
Great.
Is the employee count. But that takes, that's not, that's a combination of part-time, you know, because there's drivers that come in and out. There are own drivers that will load up and don't come back until they.
You have a question from the board? Now, if we have somebody in the audience from the from our township this evening, and you have a question, Mr. Creeder, based on his testimony, now would be the time to do so. Okay, thank you. Mr. McNally, that was very free form. We usually don't go that much free form, but for Mr. Parker, right? The, yeah, going through the engineering letters, and it would be helpful if you went through the letter. And I'm going to ask you to do so quickly, because we're playing beat the clock tonight. Thank you in advance.
So my name is Steve.
Let's get you qualified first. Can you give the board the benefit of your credentials, please?
I'm a licensed engineer and a planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm an owner of Parker Engineering and Surveying, testified before this board, as well as other boards throughout the area as an engineer and planner for applications similar to this.
If your licenses are still in good standing?
They are, yes.
Yeah, you're acceptable to the board. Are you testifying both as planner and engineer?
Yes.
You are, okay, thank you. Let's start with the engineering first.
So I will just go right to, there's a, I believe the latest letter is from November 12th of 2024. I think we can go through that quickly, I think, Mr. Creeder.
It might be good to put the exhibit up and just familiarize.
Do you need a stand? Do you need a stand?
Because it's kind of hard to understand the comments when the exhibit hasn't been introduced.
The plans that I have are just the plans that were submitted before.
Okay. Okay.
The plan that I have on the board is sheet number three of the plan set that was submitted for review by the board. And I'm sorry, I'm just looking for the letter, I just had.
Is this in a good spot for you right here? Is that all right?
So, yeah, this, just to give a little bit of.
Does that work all right? I'll stand close. The plan sheet three shows the location of the building itself in the middle of the site. It's a little over 19 acres in total area. The access from the property is Foster Lane. It's a cul-de-sac on the left-hand side of the drawing. Immediately to the drawing south of the property is the railroad property. To the north is the Bushville Creek area. And then you can see most of the site has already been developed already. There's a, the manufacturing building is located where I'm pointing right here. The offices, two-story shop buildings over there. The back part of the property is the stormwater management area. And then the rest of the site in through here is for vehicle circulation, as well as storage of the products, the ones that have been made, as well as the storage of the concrete materials. The concrete plant is in the back area here, and then the bin area where the storage piles are located are also in the north, what I say, the northwest part of the site over there. So that just provides a little bit of context for the site. The proposed building is right basically in the middle. And where that is, is that's in an area that's, again, substantially developed. There is a portion of that that's long right now, but it's kind of right in the middle. It works best operationally for the company to have it there, because it works well for the circulation and the storage of the materials described by Mr. Creeder. So I'll move right to the letter, the review letter.
Just to be clear on that, when Mr. Creeder said that there was going to be some additional storage outside the proposed manufacturing, would that probably occur in that proposed gravel area or?
Yes, that's correct. It's going to be right, basically right in front of the building right over there. And that's, if you ever brought there, there's a lot of stuff already stored in that area right now, and they're just going to continue that. I think we can go through this relatively quick, Mr. Chairman. I think on page number two of the letter, comments one and two, we can agree to those items. Comment number three is just a comment about the overhead door on the proposed building on the east side is going to come out onto a gravel area. And yes, it is, that's in fact going to be gravel. Uh, so the access in and out will be over a gravel area, not over a lawn area. We'll agree to the, um, request for additional information, number four. And I think comment number five is regarding one of the, uh, the variances that are being requested. As part of the, uh, the proposed building, there's some parking that's going to be in the back of that building or the north side of the building. And the access to that parking area is by a, an aisle that goes directly over to this area where, towards where the concrete plant is. What we're suggesting is that aisle really only needs to be eighteen feet wide, uh, because it's just for the, the use of these cars that may be parking in the back over here. Uh, so it's, it's not a heavily trafficked area. The eighteen-foot width is really just for two-way traffic, uh, that'll be for vehicles, for cars that may be going back and forth. So requesting a waiver for that just to help minimize the amount of impervious coverage, uh, there on the property. Um, we think that's a better design, uh, than increasing impervious coverage. And it's just quite frankly not necessary for the way it's going to be used. The next comment is comment number six about a, um, a curbing. Again, the, the only new area, uh, that we're talking about is that parking area behind the proposed building. Right now, the way that the site is designed, the stormwater runoff from that area goes, flows right overland into the detention basin. Uh, that's right directly behind it. Uh, we're proposing to eliminate or not propose curbs in that area. That would increase more, the need for more catch basins. It would increase the, uh, the, uh, stormwater management structures that are out there. We don't think it's necessary. We think the site was originally designed, uh, to flow as overland flow into those detention basins. We're just proposing to keep it that way. Uh, so we'll operate basically the same as it did before. So again, the curbing, we don't believe is necessary. Actually, we think it functions better without curbing out there. To eliminate the need for more stormwater structures. I think the next comment seven, we, uh, is, is a comment. Number eight, uh, of course, is, uh, soil conservation district approval is one of the outside agency approvals that would be required. Uh, and certainly we agree to that. Um, I think comment nine is a, another comment about lighting. Uh, lighting plan has been included in, I believe, sheet five of the drawings. Comment number ten, stormwater management, there's a.
Can I just stop you there for a minute? Rakesh, have you seen that lighting plan?
Yes. Uh, the revised plans do have the lighting information. It's outside.
Comment number ten, again, is, is a comment about the stormwater management. And then there's some additional comments regarding that. So, uh, we'll just go right to the next section then. On page three. Uh, comment number one, we'll agree to those comments in the, for the latest for our engineering memo. To address those, uh, to the satisfaction of the board engineer. We'll agree to comment number two. Uh, I believe comment number three is regarding the, uh, banked parking. The ordinance allows a certain percentage, percentage of the parking stalls to be banked parking. And so the, the requirement for parking for the manufacturing building, we're providing ten of those parking stalls behind the building. Four of them are going to be banked in front. Um, and they'll just, we just have, we're just showing them where they would be located. Quite frankly, we really don't think we're going to need any of them, uh, because there's no increase in the number of employees, but, uh, that's what the, uh, the ordinance requires. So we're providing the ones in the back of the building.
Yeah, I, I think the only, the purpose, the main, main reason we asked that question was just in clarification. The drive path, is that, uh, is that what the intended path is for the trucks or for passenger vehicles? And I guess, because our question was, you're showing a drive path going to the banked parking, uh, and not to the proposed parking on the basin side. So what's the, what's the purpose of the drive path, I guess?
Yeah, that's really just for the, any of the trucks or vehicles that are going to be traversing the site.
Okay, so it's a truck circulation path, not necessarily, you're not directing people to the bank park, and you're directing trucks with that, that path.
Correct, that's exactly right. Yeah, to provide access, how they would commit to the site.
Yeah. I'm sorry, could you just, uh, clarification on, on number two A? So are the utilities been in the underground?
They are, yes.
Okay, and so then, then you agree to show the limit of disturbance?
Yes. Um, okay, comment number four, uh, trash enclosure. There's an existing trash enclosure between the existing, uh, office building and the manufacturing building. That's going to remain in place. Again, there's no need for, uh, for any more than what's already there. We agree with comment number five, number six, we agree with that as well. Agree with comment number seven. Agree with comment number eight and comment nine as well. I think, uh, comment number ten is a, uh, comment about the existing stormwater management system. Uh, it is functioning as designed. And I think there's a recommendation for persons about to be televised, um, in the vicinity of the proposed improvement. So we'll agree to that as well. Uh, provide and provide a, a report or a copy of a, a video, whatever is preferred.
Yeah, the report's fine.
Okay. Comment number eleven, we agree with as well. We'll provide those details for the roof drains. Uh, number two, comment number twelve, we'll agree with also, as well as thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, I think was discussed by Mr. Crater. He's agreed with the comments of the landscape architect, uh, that, you know, to replace any of the landscaping that, didn't survive since the original approval. Um, so we agree to that, uh, as well as number sixteen also. Uh, there's some additional outside agency approvals that are listed there. Of course, any of those that are required will secure, uh, prior to the issuance of any permits. Think that's basically it for the engineering letter. So we'll move right into the, uh, letter from Mr. Baccarella.
I'm sorry, you're going so quickly, which I appreciate, but, um, item number thirteen. Are you happy with?
Yeah. We, we asked for just some, some clarification, uh, but we did subsequent, uh, to our, um, the, the last review, that can did submit additional stormwater management, uh, information. And the main thing we wanted to, to make sure is that the stormwater management basin, uh, can accommodate this additional impervious. They did provide the information from the, from the original stormwater management report. And the, the proposed discharge from, uh, the basin is far below, uh, what the allowable was from the original design. So I'm satisfied as far as the suitability of the, uh, the, um, existing storm management basis to handle the runoff.
Um, so moving on then to the planner's, uh, Mr. Baccarella's letter.
This is December 12th, 2024, correct?
Yes, correct.
Because there was a previous one.
That's right.
In 2023.
I think that, um, comment number one has been, uh, just a comment. Number two, I believe Mr. Crater provided the overview of the business operation. As well as number three, number four, the variances that are being requested. We talked about, uh, I think two of those. Uh, one, of course, was the, uh, curbing, uh, variance for the curbing. Two is the variance for the width of the driveway aisle. We're proposing it to be eighteen feet versus twenty-five feet, which is what the ordinance requires. And then, uh, the third variance is for an aisle with a twenty-four feet, uh, where twenty-five feet is required. I, I'm not a hundred percent sure where that is. And there may be an existing part of, of the site that has that on there. But I don't believe we're proposing, um, the only aisle we're proposing is eighteen foot wide. But there may be portions of the developed property that.
Yeah, I believe it's, it's a portion. So this wasn't, yeah, it wasn't what was being proposed.
So this is a pre-existing? Is that, is that, is that what you're saying? So it's a pre-existing non-conforming? So this is just to kind of clean things up?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it.
Uh, number five is it, uh, also, the curbing is also, is it just to a variance, is a design waiver? Uh, or a design exception, I'm sorry. So we're requesting that, uh, in addition to the variances. And then I think we talked about the, the testimony, why we think that's a better alternative, how we think it improves the site and doesn't contribute to, uh, you know, stormwater ma, increased stormwater management. Um, and we think of the circulation will work better without those items, without the, uh, um, curbing and with the eighteen-foot wide aisle width. I think number seven, uh, we, it was discussed by Mr. Crater, uh, with the RTMUA and the, uh.
You're going to get us a letter.
Yep, okay. I think the drive paths we did talk about, again, um, Mr. Crater described how the site works when trucks come in, they kind of, um, traverse the site in a counterclockwise fashion. And that's going to continue.
I had, I only had that comment because, um, we went to the site just as a site visit. It's been, it's been quite a while, but when we were trying to figure out what the circulation is, it was, it was not, it wasn't clear. But I mean, y- you're correct. It's not for, it's not for retail. The public isn't, isn't invited, but it was more of half, just some testimony for, for the board of how it.
So if, if a, an employee was coming in and going to work in the new building, would you show us the travel path that they would go?
Yeah, they would.
Yes, I would see them coming in this way and then the other part of the area that's shown. But I think some of what you may have seen, Jeff, is that, and what's not shown here is the class B recycling, uh, allocation. There's piles that are here that go here that go up and down the center row. So when a truck will come in to bring material in, we receive material, they'll come down this way and then have that material dump. And then also loading down, they'll look here and come through that one. So there is that, uh, here, that's on this upper piles for class B. So there is additional. And then there's inventory within here. That inventory also has rows, so important to move the product. That's not, really not for vehicular traffic, but it's a, well, a, a hard product.
And those aisles aren't defined on the, on the ground really, because they change, you know? Certain times they have a lot of inventory sitting there, and other times it's, it's depleted and it's not there. So, you know, the exact, that's the general trend is what's described by Mr. Crater. The exact location is not something that's marked on the ground because it, because it changes.
But you're going to generally show where the stockpiles for the class A?
Yes, yes. That, that'll be part of the plan revision. Uh, comment number ten is a request. Uh, we provide the parking, uh, calculations on sheet, uh, three of the plans, and I think the request is for just a total number. We haven't reached, we broke it out for the individual buildings. We'll provide a total number, uh, on the revised plans. Um, and I think Mr. Crater described number eleven, the employees and the mezzanine. Number twelve, comment number twelve, in the, in the area, uh, just below the manufacturing building, uh, there's an area that was approved for bank parking stalls under the original site plan approval from 2009. Since then, there's a rail siding that's been added in an area. Um, so that's not shown on the plans here. We'll revise the plans to show that. And what we're going to do is take the, uh, that bank parking and just slide it over to the east a little bit. So it's on the other side of the rail siding there. Uh, there's plenty of room to fit it, to fit it in there.
Where's the rail siding?
So it comes in, so the railroad tracks run, uh, kind of east-west here, they're just below the site. There's a rail siding that comes in right, kind of right in this area here, right next to the existing parking area for the manufacturing building.
And was that approved in a previous application?
Uh, I wasn't involved in the prior application, so I don't know that.
Was the railroad siding approved?
The side of majority signings on the rails, uh, property. The, uh, I would assume that was, yes, I would assume that it was, but I can't say for sure that.
But where it comes on to your property, was that, was that approved?
I would assume that it was at the time because the, the rail was there.
Okay, I'm not testifying, but my recollection from the F Creek application is the, uh, application for the F Creek, Greek, am I saying that correctly? There was some testimony given at that time where the siding was on the railroad's property.
But on this one, he's saying it's coming on to the.
Oh, okay. All right, I didn't, I didn't pick up on that.
Yeah, because it's going where.
Because I thought it was on there.
So there's, could you show on the map where that siding is on to your property? And then what's, what's the siding used for?
Well, the area is right through, right through here. Now, getting a siding, uh, I pointed that area, that may be just the access for the, from the site on to there. I don't know exactly where the railroad, that's what Mr. Baccarella's comment is. He wants to see exactly where that is, but. And I don't think, I don't think the railroad, uh, is as close or even comes nearer.
The tracks themselves, though, correct.
So the tracks, just to, they, they aren't on your property, the tracks, or they are?
The tracks are on the property, yes.
Okay, so there's a real, uh, off siding, whatever the, the technical term is.
That's the siding. Before, we had discussions about this on the F Creek, because there was. I recall we had discussions on this in the F Creek because, uh, of the product they were doing in there, rail siding. And the rail spur, that is governed by Department of Transportation and Department of Railroad.
Right, but the site plan stuff, which. So, okay.
We're going to include that on, on the new, on the new. Yes, yes.
The use.
Yeah, do you use that second?
Very rarely. The, the product that we're looking to, that product I mentioned, that home bearing product that, except you're finishing it and it's finished like an architecture property. The sites that we, and truck to recently, uh, we actually rail the rods. We rail the product down in Florida and the rail is out in California and out west. Some cemetery construction. But you're talking maybe a couple of those.
The, uh, comment, next comment is comment number thirteen. The, this, as described by Mr. Crater, this is really just a storage building. There are, there are no, uh, solar panels proposed for that, uh, and there's no real lead, uh, aspects of the design for the building either. It's, it's a, it's just going to be, uh, it's not conditioned space, uh, in the main part of the building. It's just a, basically a warehouse and a, you know, manufacturing area, as you described. Number fourteen on the last page, again, I think Mr. Crater talked about that, uh, DEP and the county committee look at those stockpiles uh, and ensure that they are in compliance with, uh, the regulations. Wetland, uh, we've requested a waiver from providing, uh, a wetland analysis that was done as part of the original approval back in 2009. This is, uh, the area that we're talking about as part of this project is interior to the site. It's not near any of those wetlands, so there would be no impact. So, uh, no need to get, uh, an updated DEP approval for that. It's not even close to the wetlands. I think the traffic, uh, review, uh, we can go over that. Uh, that's comment number sixteen. Uh, seventeen, the, the storage is screened from the whole back area of the site. You can't really see from Foster Lane or from Pennsylvania Avenue, so it's all screened. Lighting. Uh, existing lighting, we didn't, you know, uh, number nineteen I'm talking about.
Could you just go to eighteen?
Oh, sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. We're going to show those stockpiles. Uh, will be illustrated on the plan. Uh, we're, we'll agree to do that in the rating does. Um, lighting, I believe the other site was approved, the lighting for that was approved. There's been no changes. That's been operating for years. We didn't show that on these plans because again, that was already, you know, previously approved. There is lighting for the new building and that is included in the plans. The color of the building, again, uh, it'll match, uh, the existing building. Number twenty-one, no new signage is proposed. We'll agree with number twenty-two, uh, building identification to be confirmed with the fire marshal. Now, number twenty-three is a comment regarding the, um, uh, just a slight discrepancy in the building area. I think we had, uh, ten thousand eight hundred, I think the architect had ten thousand seven hundred ninety. Um, we'll make sure those are consistent. Uh, and then, of course, we agree with comment number twenty-four, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six, she's here.
I'm sorry, also twenty-three says the plan shall reflect one number. The plan shall reflect one number.
Yes, we'll, we'll make them consistent.
Okay.
And I, I believe the number's going to be ten thousand eight hundred.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I missed that. My apologies.
Um, and I believe the, um, rest of those comments are just comments. I think that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any board questions? Any other additional board questions? Mr. Parker? No, I don't believe we have anybody here from the community. If anybody wants to ask a question, with Mr. Parker on his testimony, this would be the time. You said, Mr. Parker, you would now speak to the traffic?
So there's a, um, a review memo from Mr. Troutman dated January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. And I think the conclusion, uh, in that letter is that, um, There, a detailed traffic impact study is, is not required, I believe is the important conclusion in that. And I think the testimony provided for the hours of operation, number of employees and so on, I believe is consistent with that.
Jay, are you good with that? Testimony on your report?
Yeah, I think the main thing to establish in our memo is we had, we had run some trip generation numbers as if the site was expanding. So even if that were to occur. It's a very low impact building for this type of use. And now we're getting testimony that. They're just needing more elbow room. They're just spreading their existing employees out. So it's probably even less than what's in my memo. And the operational testimony that we've already heard, I think confirms a lot of the other questions about deliveries, employees, hours. So. My comments are satisfied.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Parker, you just want to touch real quick on, on any planning aspects that you haven't covered already?
Yeah, I think you, I think we've touched on those already, how we think that this is, is, you know, better for open space circulation, better for stormwater management, and it's just a better option. For the, the request for the variances. So I. Don't know that you need more explanation on that, Mr. Chairman?
Well, I think you need to make your case for the C variances, right?
Well, okay, we certainly think that this is an improved, an improved option for the development of the site. That's there. We believe that the. The. Circulation of the site will be improved. I think the stormwater management of the site will be improved. By not requiring curbing around the parking lot and by allowing the 18 foot drive aisle width. Those are really the two variances that we're talking about here. So we believe it's a better design option. And we don't, we believe that this can be approved without any detriment to the, to the zone plan, zoning laws, or to the, the public surrounding site.
Mr. Parker, it's your opinion that the benefits of planning variances outweigh any detriments and that so variances will not substantially impair the zoning plan or.
Yes.
And I don't have anything else for what?
I'm just looking for my notes on the fire. You said you had satisfied, would satisfy everything on the fire marshal's report. Am I correct? Remembering that?
Yeah.
Correctly? Okay, good.
That was the Fire Marshal's letter of January 3rd, 2023.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Okay. Sure. So. Just, just to sum it up. So there, if the board, if there's no further deliberations, the motion would be to prove, to approve a design waiver from section. 29675, a C variance to section 296153B2. For an aisle width of 18 feet where 25 feet is required and a C variance to section 296153B2 for an aisle width of 24 feet where 25 is required. That is a pre-existing condition. The applicant is stipulated to comply with the Fire Marshal's memo, which I would incorporate. Into any resolution as well as all of the conditions in the. Planner's report dated December 12th, 2024, as well as the engineer report of November 12th, 2024. And as well as the. As well as the. Landscaping architect report dated 212, 2023.
Can I have motion to approve as outlined by Mr. Toriel? Second?
Chairman, Mr. Edward Giddings?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Donna Drews? Ms. Robin for two? Scott McDay?
Yes.
So Glenn Sopoloski?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Counsel, once I get a draft of the, once I get a transcript, I will get you a draft of the resolution for your comments before I circulate it to the board.
You want the letter to you as well from the M U A?
Great, just to have it in my file. Yeah, thank you. Likewise.
And may I suggest we take a ba, a break?
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take five minutes. Let's really keep it to five.
Thanks.
Go. All right, everyone, we're back in session. Next up on our agenda this evening is the second application, Catherine Jankowski, a minor subdivision.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Steven Grunberg, Grunberg Law Office on behalf of the applicant, Catherine Jankowski. We're proposing a one lot minor subdivision. Which has some C variance relief. This matter was transferred from the Board of Adjustment, but it's a fully conforming use. I am going to kind of make this quick, I think, because I know you have a lot of business later to go to. So I'm going to kind of cut my statement short and I'm going to remove one of my witnesses and just go right to engineering and planning. Because really, that's what this is all about, is what the plan looks like and what the variances are. So. I provided proof of service and publication of the notice of hearing in advance of the meeting and asked that the court attorney confirm jurisdiction.
Yes.
Thank you. And I have two witnesses, Eric Rupnering, engineer, and Elizabeth McManus, our planner.
Okay, and I'm going to do the same thing as I did in the last application. If everybody's going to testify, you could raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, please, starting with Ms. McManus, from left to right, please state your full name for the record.
Eric Rupnering, the applicant's engineer.
Rakesh Darji with the Department of Resolutions for Engineering.
Jeff Bacarrella, county planner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rupnering has been before this board multiple times, so we can skip.
Thank you. Your licenses are still in good standing.
Yes, thank you.
Just make sure you're on top of that microphone, Eric.
Sorry.
She, she even got warned.
If you could please tell the board what our proposal is for a one lot minor subdivision. Actually, before you do that, I just want to clarify a couple of things. The lot numbers, the tax assessor had a. A notation that our lot numbers are incorrect. And what the remainder lot will be, will be 5.06 and the new lot will be 5.07. So when we refer to the lots, let's refer to 5.06 and 5.07, just to make it easy. Then, and the other thing is one issue that has been raised by. Mr. Bacarrella in advance is whether the. Property owner of lot 5.05 needed to be part of this application. I had conversation with Mr. Toriello yesterday. We conferenced the matter. And that they don't need to be part of the application because this is a subdivision application. But I did supply in advance correspondence from the adjoining property owner indicating their consent to the application. And urged support and consent to the plans as submitted by the applicant and urging the board to approve same. And I'd like to mark that as exhibit A1. And I have bunches of copies for everybody if you want to see it.
Yeah, and just, I, I believe Mr. Bacarrella's report had referenced a conversation that the two of us had, and I said that the property owner had to, had to be noticed. But I was, I had misunderstood the layout and once we had the conference and I was able to see the visuals, pictures worth a thousand words, I, I changed my. My opinion on that.
And, and we appreciate working with us to have that conversation in advance to streamline the application.
Yeah. Should this letter be marked as an exhibit?
Yeah, I asked for it to be exhibit A1, if we could. And Mr. Rupnering, can you take the board through our proposal on the map? Or, or the plans that you have on the board? And these plans are the identical plans that have been submitted to the board and not colorized or changed in any way so that we don't have to mark them, correct?
Correct.
Oh. They were the same.
So the first sheet that I have, this is aerial photograph that's been included within the exhibit that the board has. And the primary purpose of this is to just show the property in relationship to the surrounding areas. The property is highlighted in yellow and it's a somewhat irregular shape, irregularly shaped property. It's a flag lot. Access to the property is provided from Old York Road. Old York Road is to the west of the property. And the property also has, I guess, what appears to be a tail that goes in a northerly direction. That is located along the rear of the lots to the north. That also from the adjoining properties to the north that fronts on Old York Road. The property is surrounded by all existing residential dwellings. The applicant's proposal tonight is relatively simple. What we're proposing to do is to subdivide the existing lot. The existing lot is about 5.98 acres and it has frontage on Old York Road. Again, the lot is located on the easterly side of Old York Road. The access to Old York Road is 50 feet wide. Our proposal tonight is to subdivide this existing flag lot into two flag lots. The land remaining will be, is identified as lot 5.06. Nope, my apologies, 5.07.
Nope, land's remaining.
You're right.
5.06.
Lot 5.06 contains an existing one-story residential dwelling. That, the existing dwelling in its current location does require two variances. One is for the minimum required front yard and the other variance is for the minimum side yard that's required. Our planner, Ms. McManus, will get into more details regarding the proofs of said variances.
Those are existing, correct?
Correct. Those are existing on conforming conditions that is not being proposed to change in any way. In addition to that, both proposed lots will require variances for the minimum lot width and lot frontages. In the R3 zone where the properties are located, the requirement is 200 feet for the lot width and lot frontage. Given that this is a flag lot and the way the ordinance defines frontage and where the lot width has to be measured. Essentially, it has to be measured within that flagstaff. So for any flag lot, it's going to be impossible to conform with those requirements. So the applicant will require variances for both of those conditions on each of the two lots.
Eric, the, the, the remaining lot is going to be approximately 100,600 square feet, correct?
Lot 5. Actually, I think the zoning table on the map is incorrect. The land remaining will be approximately 78,937 square feet. And again, that lot will be located along the southerly side of the property and proposed lot 5.07, that will be 178,956 square feet.
The minimum area requirement is 50,000 square feet?
Correct.
So for the proposed flag lot, we're over three, three times that requirement, correct?
Correct.
And the. The remainder lot is actually almost, well, it's, it's a size and a half that requirement, correct?
Correct. Um. The intention of the new lot or lot 5.07 that the applicant is proposing is to construct a new single-family residential dwelling. The actual design of that new residence or new structure has not yet been finalized and certainly if the board acts favorably on the application. All of the necessary zoning permits and soil conservation approval, health department approval and so forth will be supplied to the township once those plans have been determined. In addition to the subdivision, this particular property has an area of wetland along the rear or easterly property lines that's located. In this bottom right-hand corner of the parcel. We applied to NJDEP for an LOI. I would say it's going on almost two years now. We've had communications with DEP. The last communications with them was in, I believe it was the summer of last year where they essentially asked us to. Revise the plan to add the transition area that they're going to apply to this wetland, which is 50 feet. We have revised the plans that were submitted. I would like to say October, November of last year. I've reached out several times to the case manager just been assigned. I've got no response. I expect the LOI to be issued at some point. I don't expect the boundary to change nor the transition area to change based on the comments we've had so far from them. Typically, once they ask you to revise the plan and add the transition area, they're in the home stretch in terms of issuing the LOI. As of right now. I don't know. I'm hoping it comes soon. But. With the wetlands and the state of order and the transition that's shown on the property, the township also has in the R3 zone, the ordinance requires a minimum improvable area. Of 40,000 square feet. Both lots exceed the minimum required improvable area. Lot 5.07, the improvable areas. Over 54,000 square feet and on lot 5.0. Lot 5.06, the improvable areas. 65,000 square feet in excess of. In addition to those requirements, there's a requirement for lot circles that have to be inscribed within that improvable area. We are showing two lot circles, one in each lot and. The land remaining track, that's unencumbered by any wetlands, steep slopes, flood plains, or any of the environmental features that have to be, that the lot circle have to be excluded from. The proposed lot. Where the last circle is shown, it's, again, it's also not encroaching on any wetland, wetland transitionary flood plains or streams. So in terms of the lot circle requirement, both lots are fully conforming and complying to the ordinance.
The. Some of the benefits of this application are there's an existing greenhouse shed, both of which are proposed to be removed, correct?
Correct.
And. Also, can you talk about the existing driveway that straddles? The existing, our existing lot and the adjoining lot 5.05? And how we're going to improve that situation by relocating the driveway onto our lot?
And the exhibit that I have, this is sheet number three of the set that the board has. And this exhibit shows. The applicant's proposal as part of the subdivision, what will happen. The existing access to the property is partly located within the flagstaff, but it's also partly located on the adjoining property to the north. The actual driveway apron straddles that property line. What the applicant is proposing to do is to relocate the access entirely within the flagstaff, within the 50-foot portion. That relocation will serve both the existing lot and the new lot. And in addition to that, we're going to extend the adjoining driveway. To connect into the new locate relocated driveway.
But that, that existing driveway already connects to the driveway that's there now, correct?
Correct.
For lot 5.05, it connects to the existing driveway that goes out to the main road.
Correct.
And on your plan there, you show a big gray rectangle building on lot 5.05. Can you explain to the board what that is?
So this rectangular, this is an existing one-story block building that currently exists on lot 5.05. That building. It's a block building. There is, are some trees, not in the greatest of shape. It's located along the southerly side of that building. That building naturally provides screening, given where it's located. It screens the proposed development, our driveway from the adjoining properties to the north.
So. I think we can go over Mr. Bacarrella's report and then Mr. Darji's report if that works for you and let's do everything else. And I think we can skip. We'll do everything here and I'll go to the items that I think we either need to present testimony to elaborate, but we're going to do everything that's in all of these reports.
So any, any called out condition the applicant stipulates to is what, is what you're saying?
Correct. Correct. But there's certain things that we might need to address by testimony. So I think all of this is just identifying the variances until you get to the planner's comment number eleven. Testimony shall be provided in accordance with those two ordinances regarding the forty thousand square feet. I think we just provided that. Number twelve on the lot circle, I think we provided that as well. Thirteen, Ms. McManus is going to provide that testimony. Number fourteen, with respect to the county review, we have not yet filed with the county and that would be a condition of approval.
Has there been discussions at least or just no filing?
No, there, there has not been a filing yet. Because we really wanted to get through this before we address the county. Don't think it's going to be an issue because you're just relocating the existing driveway on to our property. It's probably something that they're going to actually like, but we'll address them and it would have to be a condition of any approval. And the adjoining property owner is going to have to be involved in that as well for their relocating to sign off on that. And I think I just answered number thirteen. Fifteen, I'm sorry. Sixteen. All, all three of those things are we removing?
Correct.
Okay, which is the hundred and fifty square foot shed, the two hundred and thirty-eight square foot greenhouse and the existing garage will all be removed.
Yes.
Seventeen, I think you already testified as to the steep slope provisions for the net buildable area and that we conform, correct?
Correct.
Eighteen, uh, provide testimony regarding the proposed septic and well on site. That I don't recall you saying.
So presently, the existing dwelling is served by a septic system. The septic system is located along the southerly side of the existing residence. It's in this oval shaped area that's shown on the plan. What we have done as part of the subdivision application, we completed witness soil log testing. For not only the new lot, we have both testing for the primary and a reserve area as required by the ordinance. But we also completed additional testing on the lands remaining. So if in the event that septic system needs to be replaced or a new system needs to be constructed, the applicant has a suitable area within the lands remaining that we can build a septic system. All of the testing have been witnessed again and they are acceptable for construction of a new sewage disposal systems. We have not, the township board of health. There is no approval per se. Normally when the testing is done, it's scheduled with board of health so they can provide us with a witness. That was done, the testing was completed a few years ago.
Two logs and two tests were performed?
We've got definitely two soil logs and I will have to check to see if it's two permeability test. NJAC seven colon nine eight only requires two profile pits or soil logs and one permeability test. Correct. And we could certainly provide those. The results were very good on the property. So completing another test, I don't think will be an issue.
Two tests, two tests and two logs.
And is that what you did?
No, we, I believe it's two soil logs were excavated and one permeability test.
And if that's the ordinance requirement, we'll have to do that.
Correct.
Number nineteen landscaping, um, this is a subdivision application and not a site plan application, but why don't you discuss with the board the, the status of any trees that need to be removed? And what we're going to try to preserve?
So earlier today, I inspected the property. It's been a couple of years since I've been there. And there are some mature trees on the property, most of which will be preserved. Primarily towards the conceptual layout that we have for where the proposed dwelling is going to go and where's the rain garden to address stormwater control in accordance with the minor provision for stormwater management in the ordinance. There are two existing trees towards the end or along that west easterly side of the rain garden. Those trees we're going to preserve. There is a pine tree along the southerly side of the driveway, the proposed driveway. The pine tree is not in good condition. That pine tree is going to be removed. It's about twenty-three inches diameter and breast height. There are a couple of other trees on the property that will be removed that do not appear to be in the best of health. Primarily, there is one tree towards the front of the proposed dwelling as shown here. When I looked at the tree today, there's a lot of dead branches on the trees. It doesn't look like it's starting to bloom the way you would typically trees, see trees in the springtime. As we get deeper into the spring and certainly into the summer, if there are no leaves on the tree, it's dead. But that tree will have to be removed. There is another tree that's located towards the south of the proposed dwelling. I do believe once we have a final design of the house plan that that tree will be, it's a tree that's in acceptable condition and we should be able to keep that tree depending upon how we locate the house. In regards to the septic system, we do have again the primary and the reserve area. The applicant will utilize the primary area, which is just basically the easterly most septic field. Construction of that field doesn't require removal of any trees. So at this point, we anticipate three, perhaps four trees that would have to be removed in order to construct the dwelling and to relocate the driveway. None of the trees that are being proposed are over twenty-four inches in diameter.
Given the layout of the, where the proposed dwelling is going to be in relationship to the neighborhood and that building on five point oh five, do you see any need for additional screening? Other than the normal residential screening that people do when they build a house?
No.
The other reason why I had that comment is because of the tree removal and replacement ordinance that would have to be compliant with.
Certainly, and the applicant would comply with those. And again, um, once we get into the summertime and we know whether or not some of these trees are alive, um, any removal will certainly comply with the ordinance.
And, and we'll agree to that as a condition of compliance with that ordinance. Rain garden, I think number twenty, um, we'll wait until we get to Mr. Dargy's correspondence. Twenty-one, because Jeff's deferring to him. Twenty-one. I think we testified as to the environmental fe- features and we agreed to incorporate all of those, including the townships in a conservation easement as requested.
Correct.
Twenty-two, we provided the status of the LOI. Twenty-three. I, I, I understand where you're going with twenty-three, where with the temporary, with the shed, if we create the subdivision, it becomes a principal structure, but I don't know how you want to deal with that. You say temporary relief may have to be required.
So the, the shed is going to remain or proposed to be remained. It's, you, you're correct. It would be a principal structure. So I don't know how the board would feel comfortable of a temporary or I mean, there's a temporary use permit. But I mean.
Honestly, folks, I don't think it's a real, this isn't like a, you, anybody's going to be occupying this as a smoker room or anything. It's a shed. So until the house is built, I don't know whether we can, we can really need any relief from it.
But you, you said it would be, it would be a principal structure.
I'm saying that's what your argument is. I was trying to figure out where you were going with it, but how big is the shed? How soon will a house be built? As, as soon as they can. The, the, I mean, folks, they, they want to move the parents into a house on this lot. So the, the goal is to get them as soon as possible.
So it's not like you're selling the lot and so I'm waiting for some.
Eventually it will be a house, you know, a residence that can be sold, but the right, and this is why I didn't want to get into all this because it really doesn't matter, but, uh, you know, the family plan right now is to have their folks move in as soon as possible there and eventually it's capable of being sold to somebody else.
And the shed scales about a hundred and sixty square feet. Sixteen by ten.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have, as long as the board feels comfortable, I don't, I don't really, if it's, if it in lines with the, with the time limits provided, then.
Can we acknowledge the existence of it so that?
Yeah, we, we, we'll acknowledge the existence of it and that the applicant has indicated that they're not going to be using it for anything other than its intended purpose, which is a shed.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Twenty-four, we will do the AutoCAD and all the rest of the good stuff that's in that letter. Um, and then unless there's anything else from, um, Mr. Bacarella, I can go on to Mr. Dargy's correspondence.
What about the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The, the agency reviews. We agree with the tax assessor as to the, the tax lots numbers, as I said, and as to the environmental commission. Uh, we're agreeing to get the LOI, but can you talk about flood hazard area and whether that's applicable?
Uh, so we don't have any flood hazard area on this particular property. Uh, the on-site stream drains less than fifty acres. So in accordance with the flood hazard area rules, um, no flood plain exists.
So we, we are getting the LOI?
Yes.
And those are the only two that I saw attached.
Yep.
Okay. And on to Mr. Dargy's. And again, we'll do everything here and I'm going to skip over to what I think we need to provide testimony on. Which may not be much now. I'm skipping to five I, which I think we provided testimony on about specimen trees, but we're going to comply. Going down to the question under seven C, whether we're going to record it by plat or deed, it will be by deed.
Okay.
Going down to number eleven. Can you talk about the electric line? And whether easement is required?
So right now, the existing electrical service, uh, to the current residence is overhead. And that service comes from Old York Road across the neighboring property to the west of us. I, we don't have any title work in that neighboring property. That service has been there for forever. Um, and I believe without any deed work, but the lot that we're proposing to subdivide might be the lands remaining after all of the other subdivisions in this area occurred. And that's probably why the overhead service remained without any easement. But again, we don't have any title work on the neighboring property. So I don't know if there's a recorded easement. Certainly the line has been there. It's existed forever. And it can certainly remain as it is.
And we're, we're going to have to work with JCP and L, I think it is to to get connected.
Correct. Um, there's an existing utility pole that we will tie into to provide service to the new lot, but any, any approval that's necessary from JCP and L, certainly we will abide by those.
So the service is a new lot. What's your intention for running service? Is that going to be off the driveway easement, the common driveway?
Um, we haven't quite decided yet how we're going to bring the service in.
I don't know how else you would do it.
Yeah.
Unless from that line, right?
From that line, I guess my question becomes the, what happens if that line you know, fall, the pole falls, something gets cut, like is there? You know, you're basically going across an adjacent property for your, for your services, that's.
I, I don't know if that's, I, I'm not understanding.
Is there some sort of a, of, like a, uh, permission that you need from that property for that to happen?
Yeah, i- if it is, it's something we would have to get, but I don't know if it's an existing line. Presumably with an existing easement that we can't, why we wouldn't be able to tie into it where it goes on, onto our.
That sounds like it's a legal question to me more than engineering question. So I can jump off the train at that point, but.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to deal with that situation. If it becomes an issue. But I appreciate you raising. Fourteen, um, as to the county. To offer for dedication to the county, that's going to be up to the county with, if and what they want. So we'll deal with them.
So yeah, that's fine. It's just, like I said, it appears that it goes out further into the right way. So we just, if there's a dedication, that would obviously have to be and you noted and everything.
Skipping to seventeen, I think we provided the testimony as to the trees. We're going to, we'll do everything else on that page. I think that's, we'll, we'll do everything else unless there's something else you need testimony on.
Um, no, no, I think when you do submit, should the board act favorably? I would just request a written response to, to the, to the memo so that we know exactly how you.
Addressed.
How you addressed it.
That's his job.
Yeah. To make things easier and cheaper.
Right. I appreciate that. That's all the questions I have for Mr. Duran. Do you have the board questions?
Well, we're not approving like the house, location of it, any of that kind of stuff.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I was just clarifying that we're not approving like a house and all that kind of stuff. We're just saying this is where the property line is going to split.
Yes, but, but we would be able, just so it's clear, we'd be able to build a house on that lot within the footprint.
Right.
Within that area.
It's not. Yeah, that would be.
Right, the board to get approval to put the house.
No, 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 but you could, you'd have to get building permits and all that kind of stuff.
Right.
Just trying to see what we're saying.
Okay, and if there's anybody here with us this evening who has any questions on that testimony? And I, absent that, I'd like to call Ms. McManus up and I know Ms. McManus has presented testimony before this board numerous times. So she's acceptable. Thank you. Your licenses are still in good standard, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm just going to press play and if you could give the board your professional opinion with respect to the variances that we've reported.
So folks, uh, I'm here, we have a handful of variances that I can address. We have, excuse me, a lot frontage and lot width variances for both of our lots five, six and five oh seven. They're essentially the same, they're two separate standards to be clear, but it's essentially the same, the same same variance in the sense that those standards require two hundred feet in this zone district, which is the R three district, and we are proposing twenty-four point eight nine feet. That's the same number for both lots and for both of those conditions, the lot frontage and lot width. And, uh, I'll provide testimony, but as a result, but that is as a result of our existing lot shape. If you recall, we have a bit of a flag lot and so that's essentially that flag condition that necessitates the variance. We are also seeking relief for, uh, two other variances. However, these are existing conditions. That was the front yard setback that Mr. Rubner, Rubnerine referenced at thirty-five point three feet, whereas fifty feet is required. And if you recall from the plan, that is more specifically not, not, uh, not the condition of a building that is too close to the street, but rather it's a building that has an undersized setback to the lot line that is parallel to the road, but is not actually along the road. And then the last variance also for an existing condition is, uh, again, for that exist, that same existing dwelling where we have a sixteen point six side yard setback, whereas twenty feet is required. Those last two variances are, as I said, existing conditions from the existing lot lines.
We're not making them worse.
Correct. No change whatsoever to those two conditions. So, uh, starting with those, uh, I, I would urge the board to think about those existing condition variances as C one variances. And I, I think that the board can find for that front yard setback and that side yard setback that they are, they can be justified due to the extraordinary and exceptional situation uniquely affecting the specific piece of property. Those unique situations, uh, or exceptional situations is the presence of the existing home that has been there for, for decades and the presence of those existing lot lines that have been there for decades, decades. And so we're unable to relocate those two features of the property. Uh, as a result, I do think that those existing conditions can, in my opinion, easily be found in favor of the, the C one criteria for the positive criteria. And I'll address the negative criteria towards the end of my testimony. For that lot width and lot frontage for five oh six and five oh seven, I also think that the board, uh, should consider the C one, uh, criteria as well for. criteria as well for that positive, for that positive criteria. Although I would, rather than that specific citation I provided regarding the exceptional situation usually affecting, I would, I think that the board can think about one of the other components of that, which is the exceptional narrowness and the shape of the specific property. So as I had said at the outset, those two frontage and width variances of about just shy of 25 feet each, 24.89 and 24.99 feet are as a result of taking our existing flag lot and simply splitting that, the flag pole portion into, in order to accommodate the two driveways, or excuse me, the driveway for the two homes. I'm sorry, I saw a couple of folks look up when I said that. So one driveway for two homes. And so it is the narrowness of that existing, of that existing lot, the shape of that existing lot, that is that is creating the need for this variance. And, and I also as I review the area, I think the board can also consider the fact that this is, this is a unique situation. And it's actually, I would say, in regard to both the front yard and side yard, as well as the lot width and lot frontage variances that we're requesting. It's a unique situation in the sense that as you look at this area of Old York Road and, and in the, the larger surrounding area, there are very few flag lots. And so this is not a condition, a variance condition that can simply be repeated over and over again as we have this existing flag lot condition that, for a far oversized lot that we're seeking to subdivide. But notwithstanding the C one criteria, which I do think fits, the board can also think about C two criteria, that's the benefits versus detriments for, for just the lot width and the lot frontage. And in that regard, I think there are a few purposes of, of the municipal land use law that are supportive. The first one is purpose G, which is to provide space in appropriate locations for residential uses as well as other uses, but here for residential uses according to their respective environmental requirements. We also have purpose E, which is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, preservations of the environment, communities, et cetera. And then lastly, purpose J, which is to promote conservation of historic sites, open space, et cetera, prevent sprawl and degradation degradation of the environment through improper use of land. And I say these three purposes of the municipal land use law. First, as we think about the, the lot width and the, the frontage, most of the time when I'm arguing in favor of one of these variances, especially where we're looking at such a significant deviation compared to what the ordinance requires, it typically comes with other forms of relief, most often lot area and perhaps other variances that relate to intensity, like perhaps improved improvement coverage, perhaps even in FAR in other municipalities. But here, these undersized lot conditions are in no way, shape, or form of reflection of having too little land to accommodate what's, in this case, the two lots or the eventual two homes. Instead, we have a lot that is more than two and a half times size that is necessary for our two proposed homes, where we've got one lot that's about twice the size, or excuse me, 1.5 times the size, and another that is about 3.5 times the size of the minimum required lot area. And so we've got more than enough additional land area to accommodate these two, two homes, except in, in the respect of the lot frontage and the lot width. And, but notwithstanding that, it's, it's clear that our property is able to accommodate the two homes, even though we have the undersized lot width, and we're able to do so through, or rather without having any other variances related to intensity. So for example, we don't have the improvement coverage, and in fact, we're well under the maximum improvement coverage. We also are not seeking relief from the lot circle requirement or from the environmental requirements set forth in the ordinance involving lot circle or perhaps riparian area setbacks, et cetera. And so for those reasons, what I see is the ability to accommodate an additional home in the, in the township, one that will, yes, help serve the, the family's needs as, as we, as we heard testimony about about the need to provide additional family in the area, but really about providing an additional home for a family here in Raritan Township. It's able to be accommodated without having any environmental impact and to do so in a way that still is well under the density anticipated in the district as measured by that 50,000 square foot lot size. And so because of that, and because of the the undersized lot frontage, what, what's ultimately provided, as you can see from the plan, is a single driveway. And I actually think that that is a benefit to the community in the sense that you're able to provide the additional home with having essentially no impact on the visibility, on the, on the road frontage. Yes, we're proposing to, to move our driveway over and to regulate it so that it's, it's simply on the subject property. But what we're not doing is adding an additional driveway, so it's, it's maintaining one curb cut. And what we're also not doing is placing another home along the road frontage, which I think is a benefit because it helps maintain maintain the corridor here of Old York Road and maintain its existing, existing conditions from the perspective of being largely a rural, a rural corridor through Raritan Township. And so because of those three, the way that we relate to purposes G, E, and J, I think that the board can find in favor of the positive criteria. So turning to the negative criteria, I'd like to start with the zone plan, whether there's any substantial detriment to the zone plan. And I, I think the answer is, is certainly no for a handful of reasons. The first thing I want to do is recognize the fact that flag lots are acknowledged in the township land use ordinance. We have a definition that was adopted not, not somewhat recently, in the last few years, that defines flag lots and specifically recognizes, as a result of that definition, recognizing their, their existence, either existing or future, as, as part of incorporating that definition into the ordinance. Additionally, in terms of the intent of the lot width and the lot frontage standard, those, those two standards are typically done to ensure a regular or a certain rhythm of homes or lots along, along the road. So as you think about the 200-foot lot width and, and lot frontage requirement, what that says to me is that the township is expecting to see a home or perhaps a, a building, if this were not a residential use, but homes every 200 feet along the road. But here, we are, while we're not proposing an additional home along the road, we're able to maintain that existing rhythm. So this is not the story of where we have undersized lot width and lot frontage that's going to disrupt the existing rhythm and go from what could be in an alternative scenario every 200 feet down to every 25 feet here. The lot frontage and width variances are really in reflection of trying to accommodate an existing condition through revised lot lines. But it's essentially a hidden change from the perspective of those that are driving along the road. I'm pretty certain nobody will drive along Old York Road and go, that's a new subdivision, but as, because of course, the lot lines are invisible to all of us. It's just going to be the only evidence of this, of this change along the road will simply be the improved driveway and moving the driveway firmly upon our subject property. And so because of that, I, I do think that we are maintaining the intent of the ordinance by not disrupting that existing rhythm along Old York Road. But in addition to that, I also took a look at the township zoning ordinance as well as the master plan to see how it is our proposal aligns with the policy set forth in there. And so the first thing I'd like to cite is the purpose of the R three district that's cited in the ordinance. It's section 296 dash 98. And it is to preserve the open agricultural character of this section of the township, and at the same time, provide for low-density, single-family residential development and related uses. We are, we are quite, in, in my professional opinion, we are exactly in line with that purpose. We are preserving the open agricultural resident, excuse me, open agricultural character of this section of the township by virtue of our new home will have little to no visibility from Old York Road. It's simply set back well behind the road more than, I, I'm sorry, I would say more than 350 feet, or more than 280 more than, more than 200 feet from the existing homes along Old York Road. And so as a result, that character of open space in this area will be undisturbed by the proposed subdivision. And then the second component in that definite, or excuse me, in that purpose is the low-density, single-family residential development. We're clearly in line with that. As our one lot is, is about 1.5 times the minimum lot size, and the other lot is about 3.5 times the minimum lot size. So again, we're, we're supporting that, that, that component of the purpose of the zone district, the R three district. And then the, the other thing I wanted to cite, as, as I look through your, your zoning ordinance, there are general purposes of the land development ordinance, and I thought a couple of those were instructive for the application tonight. The first is to preserve existing natural resources and give proper consideration to the physical constraints of the land. I think that's consistent with what we're proposing with minimal tree removal and no relief sought that references environmental constraints. So again, no improvement coverage relief, and in fact, we're well below it, no relief from the lot circle or other environmental standards. And then in addition, there is also item K in that same section, which is to ensure orderly growth and development, the conservation, protection, and proper use of land and adequate provisions for circulation, utilities, and ser, and services. I think we're clearly in line with that for all, for similar reasons. The orderly growth and development, again, we're, we're well beyond the minimum lot size. And the, the application, the, if, if we are able to gain your approval, we'll have little to know, we'll make little to no difference in terms of the appearance of the section of Old York Road. And then lastly, in terms of negative criteria for the zone plan, as a result of this application, we're going to be removing three non-conforming structures, the greenhouse, the shed, and the garage. And removing those will, will not only bring the property into conformance, but it also is going to remove some of the clutter on the property and will improve the appearance of, of the site as well. And of course, we'll remove some of the impervious cover from that, from that existing lot. And then of course, one of the other benefits to the application is that the existing driveway will be relocated such that it is only on the subject property and not split between the, the lot serving, the, the portion of the lot serving the home and the adjacent property owner. And so we'll have more properly regulated driveway for, for residents of this area to use. And then the last component of my testimony is in regard to substantial detriment to the public good. I, I would also say that there is not substantial detriment to the public good, in part because the, the changes that we're proposing will have little to no impact on, on how the public experiences Old York Road in terms of how, the lack of change that will occur to motorists along the road. In addition, for our residents that we are neighbors, I should say, that are proximate to, to our, to our property, our homes are either the existing home or the proposed home on the plan, we have existing vegetation that will provide screening, and we have setbacks from area homes that exceed in many or all cases, 200 feet. And so we have very limited impact upon our neighboring residents as well as any folks that are traveling along Old York Road. And of course, lastly, I want to highlight the fact that we're, again, we're not requesting any new relief for the proposed home. It's, it's just about existing conditions and the lot frontage and width.
I have no questions.
More questions?
Oh, thank you. I have two questions. I just have two questions. So the existing lot is a compliant lot, correct? I'm sorry, the existing lot is a compliant lot?
It'd be, yeah, it far exceeds the, the minimum lot size. It's, it's several times greater, of four or five times greater than the minimum lot size.
And the, the, the proposed driveway is not going to create any variance relief?
Not that I'm aware of, no. No. I mean, certainly the, the driveway is in, is in the portion of the lot that has the undersized frontage, but the, I'm not aware of any variance relief necessary by virtue of the driveway itself. Aware of any variance relief necessitated by the driveway itself.
No further questions?
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Anybody from the public who might have questions from Ms. McManus's testimony, no? Thank you. I, yeah, I'm going to keep my closing statement that we asked that you grant our approval.
That's my stellar legal.
Yes, there you go. So there's no question. So the, the, the motion is to approve the C variance relief with respect to the, the bulk variances, the side and the front lot area. The existing, there's, there's two existing, right? It's the side and the front?
Front, yes.
And then the two additional C variances that have to do with the front lot.
So there's technically four.
There's four.
Two, two lot frontage.
Right.
And two lot width.
Okay. So it's four on that, and then, so it's total of six, then, that's what you're saying? Okay, got it. Yep. With, with all of the conditions, the applicant has stipulated to all of the conditions called out by the Ford Professional Report. There is a general reference to outside agency approval. I did speak with counsel, given the fact that the driveway is going to have to be relocated on a county road. It'll obviously be subject to county approval to the new cutout, the new driveway cutout.
Correct.
I believe there was a, they agreed to comply with the tree, they agreed to comply with the tree, the new tree removal ordinance, which wasn't explicitly in there. And then also the permability testing.
Yeah, I made a note, I have a note to that, and because it is referenced.
But not.
It, but not yet, but I did, I did make a note to that, so that wouldn't be in there.
And we agree.
Motion to approve?
Second. Chairman Ms. Arregings?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Donna Drews?
Yes.
Ms. Robb of the two?
Yes.
Ms. Scott McDade?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle Cavaciri?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn Sokolowski?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Can I have 10 seconds?
Sure.
Since I appear before the board a lot, and I know you had discussion about the conditions dealing with the time periods, my only input would be that it should mirror the municipal land use law. So that if you're going to have conditions for site plan approval for preliminary, my recommendation would be that it would be for the three-year time period plus two extensions. And if it's for final, it should be the two-year time period for three extensions. That's consistent with the municipal land use law, and it prevents the situation where an applicant has a resolution that's different than the municipal land use law, and you have to come in and say, I've got a one-year extension, one year to protect my variance, but two years under the municipal land use law, or three years under municipal land use law. It tidies things up so it's consistent, and you don't have to worry about different time periods. That's my only input on that.
Thanks for those 10 seconds. Thank you.
It's there, she just.
It wasn't close enough. I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, we do. We have a motion to go.
Okay.
Motion to go into.
First, if Joe would like to just make the motion and just announce what we will be discussing in the closed session. Do you even know, Joe?
I don't know that I know all of it.
Okay. Okay, well, and I think it's safe to say that the board will go into a closed session for attorney-client privileges to speak about board personnel. um, board personnel, um, board procedures, and, um, the Flemington Junction three, the resolution matter. Are we going to speak about that? The diamond nation?
Yeah.
Okay. And the diamond nation? Memorial. Memo from Jeffrey.
Okay.
That's in a closed session, sir. See ya.
I like clarity.
Are we going down?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we can stay here.
We just had to make sure the mic.
Yeah, the mics need to be off.